I guess we'll call on either.
This is a reply of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so just to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded. So, take that for whatever it's worth, please. So, consent agenda, an improvement of our minutes. Any discussion? Call for it.
I would like to clarify one point. It's from the regular board meeting, line 56, 57, 58, and 60, 261. It says, "The Mrs. -- I am, as Ms. Torres moved to pass a resolution as presented, outlining its Lawrence Carlton School District's official position regarding the public education recommended -- recommendation regarding John McGee's certification. At the point that he, Ms. Torres, present this resolution and her position as a witness for Ms. McGee before the Montana Board of Public Education." Mrs. Rose, second in motion, page 32. Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Finley oppose. The reason that we -- I opposed that was we were -- I was thinking that Vicky would carry a message of unanimous board support. I don't care, Vicky's free to go wherever she wants, but without -- I -- where this resolution led me to believe that she was going to take unanimous board support, which didn't happen, so. That's annoying, that's a plain manifestation.
Okay, any other discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor? Alright, so let's go on to the warrants. And, Mrs. Torres, do you have any questions? No. How about you, Mrs. Rose? And, Mr. Finley?
Well, just this one, 5600. Elizabeth Doliva, OCR team. Is that the little entrepreneurship business unit?
No, our OCR training was one of the things that we had done is we had provided legal training to all of our coaches on satellite compliance.
So she comes in, she came in and trained.
The head coach is who runs each store. That's all I have.
Alright, Mr. Reynolds, did you have anything?
Couple of negative scoreboard, where did that one go? Universal Athletics, sorry, I'm on a date.
Last spring, we had a severe windstorm down football field, which the school building went down, and so we submitted an insurance claim, but we ended up having to pay out of warrants, and now we're receiving the papers and our insurance carrier for that. And that's corporate.
So, Universal Athletics, we purchased a new server.
Correct.
On the student activity, can you explain the two negative balances on the student activity? There's two negative balances in it, the first page, under football, negative 1253. Last page, under volleyball, negative 2480, 219.
Okay, for those negative balances, those are, we have, money is that coming into the program, and we have, in that program, some bills that will come in that we pay for, and we know that we have more monies that are going to continue to flow into that account. So we do have, you know, a couple of negative balances there as well.
Recall the last meeting when Mrs. Kim Downey was here and the question I asked to her on that issue? And her response?
What was her response?
The question was, should we ever have negative balances? Her response was no. And I did, if she offered to give me a caller at any given time, I did ask a question on that, so I called her yesterday, and her response again was that she could not understand why it was there, and that she not mean that.
Well, I think in response to your question, if you call Mrs. Downey upon us, when she looks at the entirety of the year, she never carried forward a negative balance in those accounts by the end of the year.
But if you read, I don't know, blah, 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 and we've gone over that numerous times, so there's policies that if you ever have a negative balance, you should have corrected immediately, and it should never happen in that account. I'm still not sure if I understand your explanation to me, but still not, still not comfortable with that. That was my, okay, I might add one more, quick one on $800 for Agios Sports Technology video editing for Maggie Woodson.
Well, one of the things that we have is, we're in this video sharing plan with other school districts across the state, so what's been going on is, our games get videotaped and then is shared with other school districts and subscribed through this service, and what also happened within that is that the coaches are allowed to work with the company to break the video down, so they can use these instructional tools with their efforts.
Okay, so I just want to make it clear, the reason I'm not going to pass one tonight is because of our negative balance.
Alright, well, I had circled the scoreboard, and you, and I knew we were going to get insurance money for that, so that's probably already bills already paid into the bill to them.
Just get it from the money.
Yeah.
The tax issue.
Yeah.
Next one, yeah, figured so.
And then on page six, line 56, 53, what are the active boards that Mr. Vasquez got?
We have two smart boards, which is for Mrs. Briney's classroom and then for Schmidt's classroom.
Okay. Alright.
For only a couple of classrooms left in the building, we do not have that smart board technology that we were trying to incorporate in those rooms.
Okay. Alright, I'm good. Okay. So, I think we need a motion here, don't we? Like a motion except that, although, Mrs. Rose. I guess we already had the discussion, so call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so next regular board meeting would be November 12th, does that seem good with everybody? And it'd be our regular 7:00 PM here, time, unless for some reason we need to be across the street, so watch the meeting posting to be sure of location. Alright, so, any public comment tonight? Please remember that I would like you to come to the podium and tell us who you are, and remember that we cannot take comment on items of personal nature or student-related nature, so at this time, if anybody would like to come forward for public comment.
Madam Karen, in person, the school board, for the record, my name is Kristen Page-Nye, and I am heading up the Lawrence Holiday Bazaar, the school bazaar, and I just wanted you guys to mark your calendars. It's December 7th, that'd be from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and this is going to be a joint fundraising venture between the middle school and the elementary school parent associations. Do you have any questions, any others?
Members of the board, my name is Kevin O'Brien. I'd like to address some comments made by Mr. Finley earlier in the meeting. The message in Billy's was that our board wholeheartedly supports superintendent, that was stated in that meeting. Just so you know, for the record, and there's videotape of that if you ever like to see it. Also, I saw videotape of the last general meeting in the library, and I thought the chair had some very unprofessional comments towards Mr. Reynolds. I would hope you give him the apology he deserves, and please be very careful about your conduct in the future.
I'm Judy Sacks. I, Kevin stole my thunder. I taught boards, board training in this state for 25 years. They were water boards, they were sewer boards, they were fire boards, they were all elected officials, and never in 25 years have I seen the president of the board act the way this president acted at the last board meeting. Plagiarism, bad, but your actions, as far as I'm concerned, as a member of the school district, not only does Mr. Reynolds deserve an apology, so do all of us that were at the meeting, very unprofessional of him.
Alright, moving on, do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence at this time.
Okay, so, let's go to our first item, Valley County Youth Court.
We have a request by Ruth Donovan, Court, coming in to introduce themselves.
Thank you, Finley. Step up together to the podium. My name is Jim Haynes, I am an elected official, and almost 11 years, as one of the district court judges, and I just wanted to come and say hello to you, I think it's the third time, I try to come through every three or four years, remind you of what we do, including with Bradley Curtis, he's one of our youth court officers, but for those of you that are interested in or think that all we do, in what we do, all we do are criminal cases, you might get that sense because that's just all the newspaper we force, but you can see, the latest figures we have are 2010, for some reason, I need to put on my glasses so I get these papers apart. So you can just see that this little pie chart, I'll pass this around to the audience. Thank you. Most of the problems we address are civil cases, we had one involving the school district last year, John Ward, but that's mainly what Judge Lightkin and I do, or we, if anybody's interested, we can pass these around, thank you. Address civil cases, criminal cases, and you can see in the juvenile cases in the pie charts, it's actually decreased, and so about 2% of our caseload in 2010 were juvenile cases. This other is just a graphic chart of our caseload, and I don't want to take up too much more time, you can see it's increased, so that in 2012, between Judge Lightkin and I, we had 1,600 cases. Again, I'll just leave this here if anybody's interested, but ultimately, I like to have this conversation so you can put a face to a name, and I'm the person with Judge Lightkin, we're in charge of the youth court, so we're responsible for our youth court officers, Bradley Curtis here, their faces with the school, and if there are any complaints, constructive criticism, any suggestions, you can get all to offer us, so we're willing to try to improve our service to you, and take any feedback we have, so just want to say hello, and turn it over to Bradley if you have any other comments, Bradley?
I don't.
If you want to field the difficult questions.
I would like to say, you know, we do have a good relationship, a good working relationship with Bradley, and from our experience, he's doing an outstanding job, he's proactive, he comes down, you know, takes care of the issues that are on his caseload, and we're very appreciative of the services that he's providing, you have a fine work ethic.
Well, thank you. I expect to hear that about all the people that work for us, except for the different school districts, but we've heard good things about Bradley, I appreciate you reinforcing that. The trustees, any questions or concerns, comments? Thank you for having us.
Okay, so moving on to school board policy.
In your board packets, you see the zip drive of the board's original on the past year, the board policy committee has been able to, one has the board association, go over our policies, how the laws have changed, and how the policies needed to be revised and updated to be more modernized, so that they are in compliance with the Montana code that exists. The policy committee has met several times, and has to follow the policies, and at this time, what the board will have on the zip drive is a policy manual that is this size and this volume, we know this is a first reading on, revisions to the policy manual, and so what the board members are asked to do is to go ahead and pull your policies up on that zip drive, and take a look through it and review it, and if you have questions, then please, you know, contact my office, and we'll be more than happy to discuss me and the ideas or thoughts that have gone into, what revisions are in front of you. Please be aware that it's first reading that kicks it on down to the next month, that can be a second reading, you can kick it down the road another month to a third reading, fourth reading, and so on, until you feel comfortable that you've had ample opportunity to review the changes, so that it can be acted and adopted. And so, NTSBA has recommended that we present it to the board this way, given that it is a manual revision of all of the policies in section 1,000 through 8,000, so if you have the zip drives, if you are having problems with your zip drive, please let us know so that we can take a look at it, see whether or not that we need to present it in a different format. If you'd like to have a hard copy of the manual, we'd be more than happy to print one on, and to get it to you that way, so that you have the hard copy in front of you, for anybody in the audience that would like to receive a copy of this, you can put a registered request through to the office, and we'd be more than happy to provide a copy through you, there is a charge for that, or if you'd like to come in and sit down in the conference room, you can do it on your own, you may also do so in that manner. So I encourage you to please look through.
Motion to accept all the changes.
As per Finley.
Start again.
Okay, so discussion, I guess I'll start by saying thank you to Vicky for sitting through hours of committee on that, with one test group of associations, it's kind of interesting though, I sat in on part of it, and lots of interesting details there.
And I might say that after being on the board as long as I have, and I thought I had read through, thought most of the policies, it was really, it was, I, even though it wasn't a lot of time, it was beneficial that Mr. Rock sat down, and, I mean, sometimes you wonder, why is that policy, I mean, it's, lots of times I just boil the plate, come from the Montana School Association, but he has a great knowledge of exactly why it is, and why it needs to be on a policy, and it was very re-educational, so I appreciated the opportunity to, you know.
So, any other discussion?
And just another note, when you do go through your zip drives, get to the table of contents, you can use section, you will see that some of the policies haven't changed, because the laws haven't changed in effect to those policies, but others have, and so what you will find next to them is an bolded R, that says, "This has been revised," so you can go directly to that policy and see, okay, what is the revision that occurred, and you can compare it to the old policy manual right now.
There is a, I didn't see that bolded R. Are they now problem with zip drive, or? That's good. So, is every policy on that zip drive a revised policy, or are you saying only one?
No, they're on, you have all of the policies, but like in the section 1,000, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 revised policies, out of all those, it looks like there's 12 policies there.
In the 1,000 section?
Yeah.
And then you go on, so, I'll need to review that again, because I didn't see those, because I struggled through to find what was revised and what wasn't, there's a lot of information, and one time, that was, zip drive's a great idea, but.
Doesn't it say on the top of the first page there, there's a R at the top of that?
Yeah, like I said, I might have got it, like I said, I got it Saturday, I think I looked at the date for a little bit, so like I said, it's a lot in there.
A ton of stuff.
Yeah, there is a ton of stuff.
So, I mean, to move, except that the first reading becomes a mistake, I have not had time to read, so.
Well, just so you understand, the motion was as a reading, and so as a reading, it doesn't mean that it's adopted, it means that it's been given to you as a reading, and allows you and the public to go ahead and to have time before the next board meeting to go through this, and then at the second meeting, you can either adopt it on second reading, or adopt it as a second reading, and as a second reading means you're not adopting the policy, you're saying, we would need more time to continue to go through this.
Basically, action should be, we received it, is basically what you're saying.
That's what that motion essentially is, that.
Far as all these, do, on all the committee meetings, you said, do we, I mean, do we post all these committee meetings at, I don't know?
Yes, we do.
If they are, so, do we keep minutes on all of them?
Yes, we do.
So that, I mean, that, for me, that would be beneficial to me to have those, to see what, since I didn't attend those committee meetings, so if I could request those, that would be helpful for me, and understanding all the policy changes that you've made, people forward that to me, I appreciate that. Well, that, I think that's all I have, you know, got a lot of reading to do.
That's why we're not accepting it, we're not adopting it tonight, we're just opening it for reading tonight.
Very well, I'm glad you cleared that up.
So, any other discussion? Mr. Brian?
Would it be possible to download the zip drive onto the school's website for the public to read?
Last thing I want to talk to you about real quick is, one of the things that our teachers are doing this year, between middle school and the high school, is they're using a tool, a technology tool called Remind 101. Remind 101 is a, it's a school-to-home tool, so, or, yeah, school-to-home tool, where our teachers are able to set up a telephone number, or a text number, or an email account, depending on how people want to use it, that students can then text or email that account, and then when they do that, they are connected to that account by that teacher, by that class, whatever that is, and then the teachers can text out or email out reminders of what's happening the next day, so if there's a test, or a certain homework assignment, or no homework, or something, or a report due, or something like that. So, not only do the students get to do that, but parents also get to sign up for it, so it's a really nice deal, so personally, I have, I think, five different ones for two of my kids so far, so I get texts either every day, or at least a couple times a week from those teachers, so I can go up to my kid and say, hey, you got something to do tomorrow, get it going, you know, so it's a really nice tool to have, we're really liking it. There are good, there's a half dozen teachers utilizing it heavily, at least a half dozen, there's probably a good dozen plus that are using it a little bit, and some others that are just getting ready to explore it, so, pretty nice stuff. Any questions? Can I ask one? How many AP courses or classes do you have? We have, one, two, it's a tough question, because we don't just offer it here. Right, is it through the university on some of them, or? No. What we have, we have, I think, six classes that we offer here at school, but then through my digital academy, there's opportunity for about six or seven more. Is this a fabulous one, here? It's here, the kids, it's not an AP class, but the kids can take AP tests out of it, because it's not that much. Oh, thanks. But they can take it online as an AP course through the digital academy for free. Thanks.
And how much is AP, does it take that test and all the AP tests?
It's about 35 bucks, I think.
It's a lot.
Seventy-five, I'm sorry, there's a waiver that goes in with it, and so, there used to be a way that we could keep the cost down lower, and we're not able to do that now, that was changed, so it's a lot more now.
Alright, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Mr. Merril?
We've got a big week in volleyball, we host Loyola on Thursday, and we go to Airline on Saturday. If we win both of these contests, we will host the district volleyball tournament here November 2nd, there's other ways that we could, if we win those two, it sets it up pretty well for us, so we can host that. We already are going to be hosting a divisional volleyball tournament November 7th, 8th, and 9th, a great opportunity for our community, and to see the girls, and they've been playing very well, and it's pretty amazing how good the team they are right now already. Senior night is October 26th versus Michigan, those games are at 3:00, 4:30, and 6:00. I want to thank Kelly Alltiner for putting the program together already, she's been working hours and hours and hours on our district individual program, and I think we'll put out a nice product, and the tournament is great. Our football team hosts Airline on Friday night, they will go to Loyola on the 18th to finish their regular senior night on October 25th at home versus Roanoke, if they can win two of these contests, they'll make the playoffs. I believe the first round would be in Fairfield, if they're second place, if they're first, if they could win all three, they would be first place, and they would host here. They've been playing better all the time, and I think it's something that they can accomplish. Our first concert of the year is October 23rd, and if anybody had an opportunity to go to the homecoming parade in the zoo with the Grizzlies, our band is incredible, we have more kids in there than probably Big Sky, they're out front, because they had the opportunity to play, so they could get to their volleyball games and stuff, Mrs. Kirby did a great job getting that organized, and very, very impressive, our band, incredible, they're doing a lot of fundraising and stuff, so we're going to do something like this class, so, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Hola.
Alright, well, we just passed midterm, already, obviously, possible years flying by, the RTI team went full steam last week for our training, just to remind you, that's the response to intervention, those are the interventions for schools we targeted in reading, we need strategies to improve reading. We completed cookie dough, tonight was the cookie dough pickup, was an amazing process. And we had all the cookie dough picked up except for one, so that was first for us. So we're excited about that. With the money that we earned last year, we were able to purchase twenty-seven iPads, and it was very exciting. Those iPads are stored in my office, and for the first time this year, every single iPad was checked out, it came in use. So the teachers are getting used to using them in their classroom. They're excited about it. We've done some training with that, so we're excited to be able to use that money to good use. And the kids are thrilled to have that technology in their hands, so we're excited about that. Just wanted to say that elementary won the Homecoming for having the loudest cheer, and elementary did a good job participating in those Homecoming activities, so we're excited to be included with that. And first and second grade will be participating in that testing starting next week.
Thank you. Middle School Homework Health is starting up for twenty-second of October, tomorrow night. I'll go down to Dayspring Church and train the volunteers along with Ms. Bristow, so they'll be ready for our middle school students. There's a little bit of training involved there. Midterms went home with three through eight today. Maps testing will begin next Monday. It'll take us five months to get through the maps testing. We have middle school band concert October twenty-ninth, middle school choir concert October thirtieth, a react assembly, which is a anti-tobacco campaign that'll celebrate Red Ribbon Week. That assembly is being organized by Ms. Pettit, and it'll be on October twenty-ninth for middle school and, I believe, high school. Right now, Ms. Bristow's in the seventh grade classes and visiting with them about suicide prevention. And then lastly, NBI, RTI, we're focusing on instructional strategies this year with those two programs. And so we have Karen Goll, who is our NBI consultant that works with, through Bitter Co-op. Anyway, she'll be coming in, working with teachers on, on the instructional strategies that are most effective in the classrooms as far as student engagement is concerned. So, good, busy.
Okay. Can I add student council in? They're building or not on the agenda? We have student council tonight, and so do you have a report for us?
I do. I'm Stephanie, I am the student council president. Student council began the year with a welcome back lunch for the staff. We also had an ice cream social to welcome the incoming freshmen into high school and to promote some interest for them running for freshman representative. We had an open position on our, our officers due to our secretary transferred schools this year. So we filled that position and therefore had to fill our senior rep position because one of our seniors took that open secretary position. And then we filled our freshman, our three freshman positions. And that's pretty much what we've been doing.
All right, thank you. And you're welcome to stay or go as you choose.
I have a lot of homework, so I'm going to go. Thank you.
All right, Mr. McGee?
All right. Just so you know, the subject system is under construction. They are back in the trees right now, excavating a fairly large hole that they are going to be sticking, tubing in the ground for drain field. They do plan on being done by mid-December. The next spot that they'll probably come in and work on is on the playground, but they're waiting for the casting of the concrete tanks that they're bringing in to be cured so that they can transport them in here. Project is going along well, and there have not been too many disruptions at this point. But we do know that as it gets near the school, that could change. But we have worked with Western Escavation in the past, and they are a quality firm that does nice work, and they have been considered in the past of trying to work around our schedule in terms of not being real noisy when we have clations adjacent to their work area. So we'll continue to look at that. We'll see on the playground that there's safety fencing that is installed, and it is set up so that the kids cannot get into that area. And I just want you to be aware that construction is underway. Another thing that you may want to know is that a couple of summers ago, we put a concrete pad in down by the football field, and the woods class and the shop has been constructing, building this shed, and is, today, they were able to put the trusses on it, and they were able to sheet the top of it. And the students are learning, you know, a lot of good skill from this project. I think they're really excited over the idea that, you know, twenty years from now, they might be able to come back with their children and say, you know what? I helped build that. So it's a great project for the students to be working on, and it's coming along real well. They hope to have the remaining part of it sheeted by the end of next week, and we'll be off to there. Just so you're aware, Montana Conference of Educational Leadership is coming up next week, so if you are interested in attending, please contact Louise in the office, and she will make arrangements for you to have a room, and to make sure you register at the conference so that you have a packet. Let me know if you want to go, and we'll get bands set up and ready to go down there. At this time, Mr. Bousk and myself are, are heading in that direction, and I believe the staff, we were heading in that direction. So the rest of the trustees are more than welcome to attend. Please hold up Louise if you're interested in making arrangements to go. Then we have a situation with the new testing that is coming out from the state, the Smarter Balance Test. It is going to be replacing the criteria and reference testing that we currently have in place. This is a new test the state is setting up, but the difference being that it is going to be a computerized test. One of the problems that many, many school districts across the state are facing is the bandwidth and the speed of the internet in order to get all the students up on the system and taking the test. And so the technology committee is going to be studying how our bandwidth is in relationship to the devices we currently have to determine whether or not we need to increase it so that we can complete the test within the narrow window of time they give us for starting and finishing that exam. I do want you to know that our school district is sitting in a much better spot than many of our neighboring school districts, and I give credit to the technology committee for its long-range planning and the foresight that it had in how we had set the network up. But the reality is that, well, now that we have these iPad devices and the wireless network and all these other devices, and the smart boards and the computers and the computer labs, we're really taxing our system, our computer system at the school here. So we're going to be taking a serious look at it this year, and I just want you to know, we may be coming forward with a recommendation for us to, to increase that bandwidth so that we have that capacity to operate and run one of those exams. And then finally, just to give you some information, we are in the process of renewing our math curriculum this year, and one of the things that we are looking at is the depth, different methods that are out there for teaching mathematics. One of the things we're going to be taking a good, solid look at is Singapore Math. Singapore Math is a, is a style and methodology of teaching math that some districts are beginning to heavily invest in. I know that down in Hamilton, they're taking a serious look at it. And so we're going to be sending a few of our teachers to train on Singapore Math so they have a better understanding of it, so that as we get closer to that decision-making moment as to where we should be heading as we do our math instruction, whether or not this is something we should be investing in. That is my report.
Great, thank you. So let's go on to personnel and extracurricular staff.
Okay, middle school boys' basketball. Middle school boys' basketball season is rapidly approaching, and so we have a couple of individuals we'd like to recommend for hire. We have Kyle Hanson, Evan Hanson, and Chris Engel-Burtston, and Tony Anderson to recommend as middle school boys' basketball coaches. Scott Stigler has met with each of these individuals and spoken to them, and is recommending that each of these individuals are hired to coach our seventh and eighth grade boys' basketball.
Awesome.
No, second.
Discussion?
I thought we already hired the assistant boys.
But not for middle?
Not for middle school, this is middle school boys.
Oh, okay.
I didn't realize it's middle school.
Okay.
Okay, so further discussion?
My name's Jay Dixon. Of course, I hope most of you know, might not, I'm sure, the last year. I've got three points, one of the last one I'm looking forward to, but the first point I'd like to address is that I, it's no mystery to all of you that I desire to work with kids and worked with kids in the school for years, and I've had great feedback with that over the years. So, you know, I approached Mr. Stigler and asked about the potential of being able to be able to just relive my younger years and just step in as a middle school coach like I started. And he said that the position was open to those in the past, which I understood. And he says, you know, if there's openings, you know, just, you know, bring an application. So I said, okay. And, and I was excited about maybe entertaining that and looking at the job description of what it was. And, you know, I started, I'm just confused because I started my career here when I was twenty-four years old by moving to Florence and looking in the paper. You know, I've got, as you know, a background in basketball, and I was an eighth grade position, so I came in and I interviewed with Mr. Cornish, and he was a middle school athletic director. So I just didn't understand, you know, my, on my first point, I just didn't understand the policy because I just waited and waited for it to be open so that I could apply. So I looked in the paper, and I just kept waiting, and I never heard anything. And so here we are tonight with your recommendations. So my second point on that, which is fine, but, and I talked to Mr. Stigler, and he apologized to me because there's some nights, and what's going on? Why isn't there an opening that I could know about? So my second point on that note, having some internet conversation, or, or website talk tonight, and, 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 and I don't want, I don't want to say all schools, because that's going to put a little bit of a big area, but, you know, most schools have their positions posted in their school and on their website. And it presents an opportunity for people that are in the community and, of course, within your staff of the school, to be able to go for these positions, which, of course, I would think a school would want to have, that if you have faculty members, somebody that would want to coach and maybe has some experience, or some that I've seen over the years that don't have experience. So, and, you know, it appears that it would also make a healthy environment if you would have a place in your school for some of us that are active in the school community, to be able to look somewhere and see what's available to your school community for posting for some of us that are actually active in the community. So my third one is just, for me, I would just like to say, I had the privilege of coaching Evan Hanson throughout his high school years, and I have the utmost support for him. He was a great player to, to coach and a great person, and I have a lot of respect for him. He was an equal scout, and he fought for us in war and served for us. I was worried every single time he didn't come home, and I was happy to see him every time he came home. I would just like to say I offer my full support for him. Think he's going to be a great leader for our school, and I look forward to watching him lead the kids, and I look forward to watching Mr. Nelson lead the kids as well. So that's my last one. I'm just confused on the first one.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well, I guess I would be, I think we should probably address that. I think it is kind of confusing, you know? I had a couple other people, maybe asked me on the, if maybe we should look into our, just our hiring practice and maybe make it more understanding to the public. It is, it is kind of confusing to me also as a board member. So I think you had a great point there.
I don't know if, is it a policy or not a policy to post? I'm just completely confused at this point.
I'm confused too. I, I get mixed questions. I'm, I'm with you, I don't know either, and I'm asking that question, or, I mean, I'm confused, sometimes we post, sometimes we don't. So are we required to? I mean, can we put this as a discussion topic and figure this out so that it does not be confusing to everybody, including myself? Our hiring practices, what, you know, what are we required? I know I've looked at our policy, and we're a little inconsistent with it, if that's the case, so I think it's, it is a valid point, and I think we need to definitely look, research it.
Do we ever put that information in the newsletter that goes out?
No, we have not.
I know in years past, we did, and we were looking for kitchen help and stuff. Maybe if there's any positions at all, it'd be nice to mention it in the newsletter.
Yeah, it's a classified or a certified position to advertise. It's a high school coaching position to advertise.
But not middle school?
Not middle school.
What, why, I mean, that's what I was, I assume that's what, that's what I'm used to at this school. That's what happened to me as I got my position in the past. I mean, I was just looking for it to be open.
I know it's expensive to advertise, but if it's just middle school, and that's the reason we don't do it, and it's there, maybe just put it in the newsletter. If the newsletter's timely enough.
Website.
Sometimes, I don't know if the newsletter's always timely enough.
Websites are good.
Well, it, doesn't it make sense that you would want to open it up, even though it will cost money to advertise, or the way I'm talking about it, to try and get the most candidates that you possibly can to do the best in your school that you can, instead of making it kind of this mystery? I mean, I would think if you were trying to get the best candidates you can possibly get in your school, then you would open it up so that there's a lot of people that could see it that need to qualify for those positions that can do great work with kids.
Okay, so we'll, we'll look in the back. All right, any further discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? All right, thank you, everybody who's volunteered, and, well, sort of volunteered, but thank you for coming and saying that you'll help, because that's what we need. Okay, on.
And finally, on the last one, we have the C-Squad Boys Basketball Coach. We have Evan Hanson. He has been involved with Mr. Nelson's program and has been volunteering and he recommended that Evan is hired on as an assistant coach for the high school boys' basketball.
Awesome. Discussion? Call for a question? All those in favor? All right. So, as much as you business.
On September tenth, the school board took action to proclaim the need for a budget amendment, and so the proclamation was signed and advertised in front of the community. At this time, we are asking that the board take the action to adopt a budget amendment that will pay for the subject drain field that is currently under contract and construction for the school district.
I'm going to ask you to adopt a budget amendment for two thousand fifteen, which is six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-seven, to fix unforeseen problems with your subject drain field.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Fendell?
Will the board be consulted? The bid is about a little less than five hundred thousand dollars. If we happen to go with that, is the board going to get involved in that decision?
Oh, absolutely. If, if we have change orders to come in, we will make sure to bring that before the board of trustees before, if the change orders are in excess of five thousand dollars. You know, if it's under five thousand dollars, we're not talking about, you know, several of them, you know, then we're going to keep the project moving forward. But if we're talking a major project issue of unforeseen error, then we will make sure that it comes before board of trustees. At this point, everything is going as scheduled. We've even taken a look at some cost savings if we're trying to drive on the project. The anticipation is that it should come under what the bid was at this point, but, you know, we still have quite a bit of trenching from that drain field down to the school, and we're very hopeful that we're not running to any larger problems, I was thinking about. and we're very hopeful that we're not running to any large costs or something like that.
And then after it's all done, it'll be, hopefully this money that's excess, it goes back in the general fund?
Not the general fund, it goes back in the reserve fund. This is where it's coming from.
So we as a board, I mean, we can, we get itemized invoices of all change orders and pay your, I understand, pay the $5,000. If we have 100 of them, they're $5,000, you know, I mean, could I, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to kind of expand on this. I'd like to remind everybody that I'm all in favor of this septic. We asked what I recommended, if you remember, to maybe look up, up at our property up here and move that direction. So I'm, I'm all for a new septic. I'm very, as I said, very concerned about how we got up to $600,000 when we started at 100 and I continue to make that clear. So I'd really like to keep a good, I'd like to really keep a good eye on, you know, what kind of, or, you know, our change orders or whatever comes through. I think it should be a monthly topic that we see as it goes through. $5,000 or less, I'd like to be aware of them all. And, you know, again, I support a new septic system, but there's a lot of, what I don't support is how we got to the $600,000. I voiced that, I think that started out from the very beginning, so make that clear for a new septic system. Do not believe that we put enough research into it and got the best bang for our buck as a, so I want to make that clear as to why do not vote for our budget amendment. Don't want our children playing in sewage anymore, I promise you that.
Okay, so any further discussion? Who are we in?
What was the board's original budget amendment for this project?
$250,000.
And now it's 600?
$7,000.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, so classified employee collective.
Negotiating agreement. The committee came to an agreement with the classified unit. In your board package, you have a tentative agreement on some of the minor language changes to the contract and some of the wage increases that you will see in this two-year agreement. It is a two-year agreement for the 2013-14 school year, which we are currently in, and for the 2014-15 school year. We are looking at an agreement of 50 cents per hour in the 13-14 school year and then another 50 cents per hour in the 14-15 school year. That's to the existing wages of current employees.
I would like to motion to approve the two-year classified employee collective bargaining agreement as presented starting July 1st, 2013, and then June 30th, 2015.
Sorry.
Discussion?
A couple of questions on this. When were the negotiation meetings, were they all posted again?
Yes, they were.
And again, we have a man on them?
Correct.
Can I get those off the table? Couple of things on here, I'd like to remind, I am on the Budget Finance Committee. Sorry to you, I'll try and speak up. Last sentence here kind of concerns me, these numbers have been factored into the current budget and we believe we can sustain such wages in our classified employees. I'm all, I'm sure our classified employees took a benefit, you know, totally, they deserve this raise and I know I am in support of that and I will go for it. However, I would like to point out that being on the Budget Finance Committee, I'm voting on numbers I have absolutely no idea what I'm voting for. I have, I've never seen a, um, the actual budget to this day. So I just want people to know that it's hard for me to sit at the seat and dish out money when I don't even know what I have in the bank, you know, it's just, to me, it's bad business and I don't want to bring that to the table up here. So I want people in the public to know that I don't feel I'm giving enough information to support this. As a matter of fact, I know I don't. I have no clue as, as the Budget Finance Committee Committee, what, what we have or where, any of it, I've known. But I do support the fact that these guys deserve more money and I truly hope I don't bring a mail levy because I have no clue. But other than that, that's, that's all I have to say on that.
Are you sticking with the report that you're looking at for the actuals?
I've requested the actuals for the last four years, on the final finals.
That report was, you know, last budget finance, that report was a four-year actual.
Right, okay, we'll, we'll go with that if you have time. Other than that, that's all I have on there.
Okay, so any further discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor?
All right. And then we have school board calendar ideas. Ms. Appleby has requested this be brought on the board agenda. The idea is that maybe we could create a master calendar of the school board because there seems to be a, an ability for us to predict certain things that are going to happen throughout the year at certain times during the year. For example, final budget approval is always done in, in August, so we have that, the final budget hearing that takes place in August. And so the idea behind a board, a master board calendar would be to put that item on a calendar so people in the public could actually see that, you know, final budget approval is going to happen at this time. And then there are other things that also take place, that are also predictable that could be put onto that calendar so people could actually come on to the website, see the board's calendar and know that, oh, during this month, they're going to be talking about this and, you know, show up to the board meeting so that they could, you know, see the issue that is out there. So I'm going to let Mrs. Appleby expand on that and explain important details to what her idea is.
Well, basically, like John just said, that there are certain things that we handle every year at certain times of the year and then there, it would also be a place to make note of things that we table that we want to touch reference to later, that we could go back to and go, oh yeah, we wanted to talk about that again and that sort of thing. And so I was thinking that we could fairly easily do that and I like John's idea of actually putting it on the website. I was just sort of thinking about starting an Excel spreadsheet, basically, but we could get right to the website, that would be good. But I'm sure that each of you guys, especially you, Nikki and Dorothy, have ideas that, things that we know deadlines that we need to meet and...
We used to have a list of them.
Yeah, that's right.
You still have one?
Oh, yeah, get there. See, I knew somebody knew something.
Home's like working under the advance.
Okay.
And so what we can do is we can take that.
And we can get, get started, yeah.
And I thought that can be added, but there are bullet points that, that basically we're just exactly what we're doing.
So I, I'd like us to get back to it, basically. So let me get right in here.
I think a huge forgiveness, we're going back to what you said.
Is that published?
Yeah, it's been published. You need to put it on our website and all of you will take a look at the format, how we want it formatted, make it easy for people to see. And then, you know, if you want to put it in the document, you know, you, you could also put it in the document as a board reminder.
So it's a monthly calendar? I don't really, I'm not really following this.
Well, it's a yearly calendar, there's certain things that happen every month. I'm just looking at this one.
Dates that you have to let the teachers know, in your contract or account. Dates that have to be returned and, what's the year one's about?
I mean, February, this one talks about enrollment figures from the second official count, preliminary budget figures.
Report to the state first through to October.
Superintendents mid-year evaluation. March is...
Or petitions.
Yep. April's negotiations, lots of things, a lot of change, trustee elections. May is the election, of course, candidacy votes, you know, those kinds of things.
We used to do this?
No.
We don't.
No, I mean, this, this is, it's a list that, that, that we've had. It's just that we haven't, you know, it's not something that's been published.
But it would be good to have that, yeah, to show the, the dates or...
I mean, the same things are listed on our, on our monthly agenda that are posted, but this way you can look a year ahead and say, oh, wait, in August, they're going to talk about the final budget, it's going to be a final budget hearing.
Would that change this or something?
Well, if it does, then you can just make it a yes. But there's certain things that aren't going to change, you know, there's certain, there's certain, there's certain deadlines that have to be met and that, and those are the things I think that, you know, include on that.
Can I ask what brought this up? I mean, were we had complaints or, I'm still not, sorry, I'm just not really following this.
I, I saw it as a, as, on another location, another location of, they had a list of things that were going to be talked about at future meetings and I thought it was a good idea.
So we've had this here, we just, mine's stuck in my book at home, the board, so I know there used to be one, everybody had, in their office had one, but it, we haven't updated or published anymore of them for a long time.
Could we move to adopt, we've been again discussing it? I don't, I guess I'd like to find out a little bit more about it. I don't really, it seemed like a big deal, but just, it's not really...
Just the calendar stuff through the year, the board has to do some things in certain months.
And that's why I thought we had urgent.
You have to let people know when there's going to be an election and what's the deadline for this and the deadline for that.
Well, it's kind of like looking at the yearly calendar that they posted on the balcony, so that, you know, that Christmas vacation happens here and Easter vacation and those kinds of things. And there, there's not a lot that you're going to list, but certain bullet points that you could list for the whole year that I think would be beneficial for the community to know.
Like the first week in February, October is your report to the state of how many kids we have and that's something that's...
Sounds like it'd be good. I mean, it sounds good, I'm just...
Yeah, it's just we have, it's a good idea. It's been around, we just haven't made any comparisons.
Website sounds good, I'm a big website fan.
Okay, I'm not going to take any comment until we get to a motion, okay, so we can have discussions and hold on a minute, okay? So.
I'll move with the allow. Evan's got your board calendars. I'll second that. Okay, so now discussion.
I guess thinking about it, it's kind of like a compliance schedule for a water system. Certain things have to be done by a certain date. If it's due the first of September, it better be on the July agenda, not the August because it might be work. So if the deadlines are there for compliance, for whether it's reports, whatever it is, election petitions, the whole bit, if, basically, those are the kind of things that would be on there, I think, as opposed to, you know, we're going to talk about hiring coaches. Well, that's not a deadline situation usually. And it just seems like that that would be helpful particularly for the public on the website so that, you know, if it's going to be discussed and action taken by the deadline, it would be really nice to have that information up there.
Dorothy, you just brought up October's enrollment count, is that?
That's every year. That's what they do their A and B count.
When, when, is that, is that an enrollment count available?
Yesterday was the official day.
Yesterday.
The first Monday of October, now it's December and February.
So what was our enrollment as of?
We haven't gotten that yet.
Okay.
Still working on it.
Okay, thanks.
When will we get them?
I don't know, sometimes it's making up, I would imagine. Okay, so any further discussion?
Who, who makes the calendar?
Well, I think that maybe John and I will work on it.
I can bring it to the board first.
We can come up with some ideas. Yeah, and then everybody who's got, knows of something that we should be remembering. I think that would be comfortable and we'll just kind of hand it around and everybody take a look and then we can go, oh.
You'd like to start it now, so it'll start in November and go through here, is that your thought?
Sooner, well, sooner so we can get it going. We'd like to start and see if we can get it going.
Yeah, I'm good, let's put together and then look at it.
Yeah.
November meeting?
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, so call for the question, all those in favor? All right. All right, thank you very much, everybody. Oh, media turn, sorry.